This is an open meeting of the planning board. Today is Wednesday, February 9th, and it is 4:07 PM. This planning board meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment except in connection with any hearing that is on our agenda, and we do not have a hearing on our agenda this afternoon. First, we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Jean McKnight?
Present.
Marty Jacobs?
Present.
Adam Block?
Present.
And the chair is present. Natasha Espada is not present, so we have a quorum of four of the five planning board members.
Although we do expect Mr. Chair that she will join by 4:30 by phone.
Thank you. As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. For those participating in the meeting, please also be... Oh, I need to introduce the planning department and other town staff. So we have with us this afternoon our planning director, Lee Newman.
Present.
Our assistant planning director, Alexandra Clea.
Present.
The building commissioner for the town in Needham, David Roach.
Present.
And Amy Halsin. Amy, I forget your title. What exactly is your title?
Economic Development Manager.
Economic Development Manager, Amy Halsin.
Present.
Thank you. So as each item is reached, I will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss the projects or proposals. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.nedham.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. For each person from the public who is recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. So the first item on our agenda is a discussion of potential zoning amendment to allow for breweries, brew pubs, microbreweries, all kinds of different names for the concept. I see that we do have some attendees who are here. Welcome to you all. And we will be discussing this with the building commissioner, David Roach, and our economic development advisor, Amy Halsin, along with Lee Newman. So I turn the floor over to you guys.
Okay, then maybe I'll start. Just to remind the board, this idea actually came to us from Amy because she had had some contact from some developers who were interested in or looking at property in Needham for the purpose of, you know, installing a brewery or a microbrewery. And at the time, we reviewed the proposals with Amy, Dave and I. We felt that the uses that were being proposed really did clearly fit into the framework of the existing zoning bylaw. And it probably made sense for us to specifically address the issue head-on, define what we meant by brewery, different levels of brewery, and identify those zoning districts where maybe these different activities would be appropriate. And so Amy did a tremendous amount of research, and I'm really grateful for all the work that she did. And she reviewed what other towns were doing. If you have any questions, I think you can talk to her about... You can go through some of the detail of what she put together. But essentially, she looked at a number of communities in that area to kind of see how they were managing these from a regulatory perspective. And then Dave and I, Dave, Amy and I, kind of worked over the course of the last two week and a half off of her foundation information to kind of put together a protocol or a strategy for Needham. And that is reflected in the beginnings of a draft kind of bylaw that we've been working on to enable the use. And essentially, what we did was we created three different definitions. The first definition was for a brew pub. And this was kind of designed to be, you know, a smaller scale brewery that would be associated with a restaurant use and wouldn't occupy, you know, more than, we'll say, 5,000 square feet. And where the facility would be allowed to actually sell some of its product, 25%, I think, to other retail establishments. So that was the one, that was the first area, that was the first definition we came up with. And we identified, I think, really, I think Needham's center, the Center Business District, Chestnut Street Business District, and Avery Square Business District as appropriate areas where that use might be permitted by the planning board by special permit. And then we moved on to basically a brewery or a nano brewery. And really, the distinction between those two uses is the size of them. So the microbrewery, which includes, you know, the production of malt, wine, hard cider beverages for distribution wholesale or retail off the premises. The microbrewery was done at 15,000 square feet. And the nano brewery was done at a smaller size, excuse me, at 15,000 barrels. And the nano brewery was, I think, was done at 6,000 barrels. And in both cases, we allowed ancillary sale of food and entertainment and outdoor dining as it's allowed in the underlying districts. And the distinction we made there was we allowed for the larger facility, which was the microbrewery, in the New England Business Center by special permit. And then the nano brewery was to be allowed in the... I think we chose the Highland Commercial 128 District, which is the business district along Highland Avenue, running from 128 to the Charles River. We included the Mixed Juice 128 District, which is the area, which includes like Wexford Street. And we included the Highway Commercial 1 District, which is where Muzzy Channel 5 is located. And we included just one portion of the industrial district, which is where, I think, it's four squares is located. So I think that's just a brief kind of overview of the framework of what we put together as a foundation, as a talking point.
Okay. Yeah, I think I'm gonna let the other board members go before I raise my question. So Adam, you have your hand raised? If you'd like to go first, go right ahead.
Sure, thank you. First of all, Amy, thank you very much for all of the background research. You know, this has been something that we talked about at the CEA before, and you've...
For the record, please, CEA stands for the Council of Economic Advisers.
Correct. And for clarity, I happen to chair that and work with Amy. And, you know, we've discussed this topic before. And, you know, it's a new use for the town. I know, Marty, you mentioned before that you and Jean, and I think section, one of the sections in our bylaw, I think at 32, one of the paragraphs, you enabled a provision at 31 that says that if it's of a like-kind use to something else by right or by special permit, that the use would be allowed, that the similar new use would be allowed by right or special permit to give flexibility so we didn't necessarily have to go back and change the zoning bylaw, which I, that effort is very helpful. And yet, I almost see this as a marketing exercise, separate from Dave. You've done a lot of work at this too. I'm sure you'll talk to us about some of the concerns you may have with this. But I think creating clarity, maybe for Dave, for your purposes, but I look at it for a second from the market. The more clear we can be for developers and in particular brewers, you know, the better it is for us to attract, you know, this kind of use. I would like to see with respect to brew pubs and with respect to microbreweries and nanobreweries, I'd like to be able, I'd like these facilities to be able to sell other merchandise that they may have. It could be t-shirts, it could be beer openers. You know, it would be their own branded type products or related to their products, if it's not their own brand. And I do think that they should be able, with a brew pub, to be able to do, you know, small quantity sales. So if someone were to walk in and they wanted to take home, you know, some, you know, a small quantity, it's like a six-pack or a four-pack, that they'd be able, you know, that they'd be able to do that.
Adam, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to that point for a second. Because I go to the Berkshires once or twice a year. And there's a great brew pub out there in Great Barrington called Barrington Brewery. And what they do there is they do not sell their beer at the restaurant. They supply the beer for take-home purchase to the liquor stores in the area. And I think that to be, to be fair to the liquor stores in Needham, it might be better if we didn't allow the breweries to sell bottled and canned beers directly to the public. Because that takes away business from the liquor stores in town. I would rather that if there's like a, you know, Needham Brew Pub, that the Needham Brew Pub beer were being sold out of the liquor stores.
I understand.
To not be competition with the liquor stores.
I understand that, but we're not talking about the same scale. We're not, you know, this is, I'm, you know, the provision already allows for 25% of the production to be sold at other facilities, and I would continue that. I would prefer the ability to also sell, we're not, I'm not saying that I'm gonna go in and buy five cases of 24, you know, like, what amount is in a case? 24? And we're gonna buy five of them and drive that much business away from the other local liquor stores. I'm saying that if I really like a beer that I've just had with my family or with you, and I wanna take a small four-pack home, either a sampler of their other beers, you know, it's not gonna take that much business away from the other, from the other stores that sell alcohol. And it's not like we're, you know, that you can buy at the brewery, you know, rye or whiskey or vodka, et cetera. But I understand what you're saying. The other, the other point that I have generally is there is, there are other concepts that I want us to be open to. I think it's important. I'd like us to be able to allow, allow whatever we call it, a microbrewery or a nanobrewery, to be able to, you know, primarily manufacture and produce their beer. But that it not be a requirement for them to produce food on site or to sell it. But rather, if we make a policy decision that in order to prevent bars from happening in Needham, that we have the requirement for food, that we, that these other restaurants would necessarily allow, that these other breweries would allow food to come in. So for instance, let's say Cook became, just as an example, if Cook became a brewery and it was no longer a restaurant. But, you know, if you and I are there and we wanted to, you know, in order to be able to sit down there and to drink, you needed to eat, well, maybe we'll bring in Marcella Art. And they'll, and that way, that customer is producing more business and supporting multiple local businesses simultaneously. They're supporting the brewery for the beer that they purchase and drink, but they're also, they're also giving business to the Chinese restaurants, our Indian restaurant, Latina, other Mexican restaurants, pasta restaurants, pizza. And I think, I think that's an important thing. And it's not necessarily important for me, but it's gonna be important in 10 years or 15 years if we want Needham to be competitive. And I think that that's a critical element. So I say, for instance...
So instead of going to a restaurant that's BYOB, you go to a nano brewery that's BYOF?
Kind of, yeah. And that concept, that concept exists in markets and has been successful. And the other restaurants in the area are supportive of it because it's a boon to all. So where it says, for instance, under microbrewery, in the middle, above the highlighted section, which may include accessory preparation and sale, that we would say accessory preparation and/or sale of food. And we may have to further adjust how we handle food in those areas, but I wanna make that, it's important to me, that we, that we don't make it a requirement that they have to prepare food on site, but that, and that they can bring food in from other restaurants. In terms of the use table in four, I would actually support the brew pub in the business district. That, you know, that business district, if I understand correctly, Lee and Dave, that's where Bertucci's is. So if Bertucci's, you know, no longer existed and we had a brew pub there, I would be fine with that. And I would also wanna see it in the, is it the Hillside Avenue Business District too? And I also thought with the microbrewery, the microbrewery is currently allowed in the New England Business Center District. I would wanna allow a brew pub there and/or a nano brewery as well. And I would also think actually to make a microbrewery available in the Highland Commercial 128 District and the Mixed Juice 128 District and the Highway Commercial 1 District.
The microbrewery, well, it seems to me, Adam, so let's have a discussion. It seems to me that the, that the major difference between the microbrewery and the nanobrewery is size. One is, one is large enough to be producing 15,000 barrels a year. And a nano brewery is so small that it can only produce up to 6,000 barrels. And so the distinction between some of our districts, like the Mixed Juice 128, are the sizes of the lots. And whether in those districts, we really want to allow a facility that's so large, like a microbrewery, that is producing 15,000 barrels a year. That sounds like it's a much larger facility. And I'm, but I think we need to look at these districts in terms of the size of the facility and how they fit into the district. Which is probably what, what the thinking was in terms of having, having the nanobreweries in the industrial districts. But in some of the other districts, I agree with you. I don't know why we can't allow more than one of the uses. Because I would think that a brew pub, a brew pub would make sense in some of the districts other than just the business districts. For example, the New England Business Center. Or even the Highland Commercial, or the Mixed Juice 128. You know, there are restaurants or a restaurant there now. And why we wouldn't allow a similar facility like a brew pub where we allow restaurants makes sense to me. And I think we should, we should look at the districts to decide whether a restaurant, like a, which is what a brew pub is primarily a restaurant rather than a brewery. You know, it's a restaurant with a brewery rather than a brewery with a restaurant in, in some of the districts. And whether we allow, I mean, we gotta think about whether the districts would support, given the size of the lots and, you know, the type of businesses that are currently there, whether a microbrewery makes sense or a nano brewery makes sense within the districts.
So to your point, and Amy, I apologize if I'm putting you on the spot here. Do we have, if I understand correctly, Canton has Trillium. And for their facility that's producing 35 barrels a year, in addition to their other uses, they're operating out of 140,000 square foot facility. So just to give everybody a sense of perspective, they're working off of a building that's about one and a half, 1.4 times the size of a Costco or 1.4 times the size of a BJ's. And they have multiple uses. But that is more than twice what we're defining as a microbrewery.
So therefore... How many, how many barrels do they produce a year?
They're producing about 35,000 barrels a year in a facility that does have other uses, but the size of their structure is 140,000 square feet. I don't think anyone's contemplating. I think the largest type of a facility we would see would be of the, would be something maybe around 50,000 square feet, about half the size of a BJ's. And I'm not even sure that that would necess, that that model would sustain itself in this market. Maybe closer, the McDonald's in town, I understand, thanks to Amy, is around 25,000 square feet. I would love to be able to see when that area behind, by the, by the Charles, behind Staples, if, you know, there was a boardwalk that was created, there was mixed use, you know, put in there, and there was some kind of a microbrewery, and maybe it was 25,000 or, you know, square feet in structure. And there was a facility for outdoor public space. And some of these pubs, you know, I've gone with my family, my son is nine. For the record, he's not consuming alcohol, he's consuming lemonade, not hard lemonade. But, you know, there is, there were these really large outdoor games like Large Connect Four Games. We played ring toss, cornhole. And it's just a fun, you know, it's a friend with us. It was just a fun place for the kids to run around. It was a great use of outdoor space. And I would love to see, I wouldn't, you know, I don't think that we're contemplating anywhere the size of Trillium that has 140,000 square feet. I agree with you, Paul, that we should be aware of what 15,000 barrels is. It's probably somewhere less than, it's probably somewhere maybe around 50 to, you know, 50,000 square feet. That doesn't make sense in some uses, but I think it may in others. And I think maybe we should tie in a specific size by square feet.
Let's get to the question of the brew pub, which is 5,000 square feet. And I'm not clear whether the brew pub are occupying 5,000 square feet. That, that would be total of the restaurant and the brewing facility? Total would be 5,000 square feet? That sounds like a small restaurant. What's the size of some of our restaurants in town?
In Cook, Cook is 3,000 square feet.
Okay.
Latina is 3,400 square feet. Three squares is 19,000 square feet.
Yeah. And it's not that big a restaurant. How big is Mandarin Cuisine? Do you have that?
I don't have that, but McDonald's is 25,000 square feet.
Didn't realize it was that big.
Yeah, I don't think it's that big.
Doesn't, I, no, I don't think it's...
We'll check our research on McDonald's. I might be off by a fry or two.
I think it's probably 2,500 square feet, honestly.
Okay. That may be the case. We'll go with that, Dave.
All right.
They still have a large fries there, but you're probably, so let's say you're right. Three squares is 19,000 square feet. Does that sound right to you?
Too big. Yeah, that sounds big too. It's, it's at least 10,000, I would say, for sure.
Okay. So...
So I think 5,000 square feet for the brew pub may be small. May not be enough square footage. I mean, that, that's a small restaurant. And you're talking about allowing them space where they're gonna have, where they're gonna have vats to brew the beer.
Yeah, it's very small.
But if you think of, if Cook...
I think I was viewing it as, as an add-on to the restaurant square footage, but I can understand why it's not clear.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna see an operation like that, take, take a look at John Harvard's. I hope they're still open. I haven't, I haven't been there since pre-pandemic times. But John, John Harvard's Brewery, which is in Sharper's World in Framingham, there's a good-sized restaurant. And you can see where the brewery portion of it is. They have clear glass. You can, you can look in and see it. To give you an idea of how much space that brewery area takes up in order for them to produce the beer.
Well, the other option there is not to have a maximum, not to have a threshold. I think Amy had suggested the threshold, or Dave had suggested the threshold when we were meeting to, because we were talking about doing this in the center of town, talking about doing it in the Chestnut Street Business District. Then we were, so we really were thinking about a smaller-scale operation.
So just to be clear, in the center of town, Cook is roughly 3,000 square feet and Latina is 3,400 square feet. So if...
They would, they would not have room to both have a restaurant and, and an area to actually brew the beer?
Well, I don't know that that's actually truthful because it's, because if they got rid of their pizza oven and that station that, you know, that takes up a fair amount of square feet.
But, but they're a restaurant. A brew pub is a restaurant, so they need to have the facilities.
I'm, I'm not saying they don't have the facilities. I'm saying that if that restaurant is 3,000 square feet, right? You could have, if you take, you could redesign it and have two vats and produce a lighter beer and a, like, say, a darker beer, like a Pilsner and an IPA. Have two, you know, smaller to medium-sized vats. And that could still work in 3,000 square feet as opposed to making it a requirement to be 5,000 square feet. Because in the center of town, Dave, do you know any restaurants that are 5,000 square feet?
I mean, I think the biggest one I, I can think of in the center of our town is Marcella Art. That's a pretty good-sized building.
I have a question. What about the Asian restaurant that's on the side street off Chestnut? It's on Chestnut Place, and it's a popular restaurant.
Ray's?
Excuse me?
Yeah, Ray's. Ray's Garden.
Is that...
That's a big restaurant.
Seems like a big restaurant.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, Adam, most brew pubs that I've been to, or practically all the brew pubs that I've been to, have a lot more than only two beers to choose from.
Ideally, they'd have, you know, a minimum of four, I think.
Yeah.
But if we're saying, you know, it has to be a total of, it can be no more than 5,000 square feet.
Well, you don't have to have an upper limit. I mean, it's especially permitted juice. You know, you could just have the definition of what it is and not have an upward limit on the size.
I mean, in the center of town, Adam, they're, they're just kinda limited by the space that they can rent.
Yes, exactly. Correct.
Can I also add just one, I'm sorry, may I just add one quick thing? Is that also keep in mind that even though Cook is 3,000 square feet, it has 1,800 square feet in the basement. And Latina has 3,400 square feet as far as the restaurant with that same amount, 3,400 square feet in its basement. So what happens is a lot of times the breweries put the... So what happens is a lot of times the breweries put the.
For each of those facilities.
No. Cook is seven thousand, and for Latina, you're at seven thousand.
You're at seven thousand.
But, you know, all, we also have to remember that as a restaurant, they also do other food prep and cleaning in the basement too.
Right, right, so, so I, I'm, I'm going with, with Lee's suggestion that we just take out the.
I agree.
The square footage.
But are we, and then, but do we keep in uh, uh maybe so, uh twenty, but uh shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the establishment's production capacity, so twenty-five percent of what they produce, only twenty-five percent can be, up to twenty-five percent can be sold to other establishments.
Right, because the purpose of it is to support its restaurant. We're supporting the restaurant aspect of it. Although, otherwise, they need to fit into the definition of a micro brewery or a nano brewery. Both of which allows them to have an ancillary use restaurant.
Yeah. Can I, can I ask a question? Um, do, don't we have in this town a limit on the number of package stores in this town?
Yes.
What's the limit, five?
Uh, there, there are two limits, one is for all kinds of drinks, distilled liquors as well as beer and wine. And the other is limited to beer and wine. Um, and it may be a total of five or maybe a little more, but then a certain, you know, like, three of them can be packaged, you know, what we call package stores sell everything and.
We have, we have.
Something like that.
We have more than three package stores in town.
Yeah, we do, it must be four and two or something.
Yeah, but my, my, my real question is, are we at the limit?
Yes.
We are.
We are, because, because the select board, uh, at one point, I, I don't, I don't, I, I think they backed away from it, but they were talking about going to town meeting to allow them to raise the limit.
Well, if they have not raised the limit, isn't this question of allowing one of these kinds of breweries to sell a four-pack or a six-pack to a customer? How can, how can we approve that? If, I mean, that would be like a package store.
Right.
That's a great question.
No, I think, I think we have to understand what the legal answer is to that as far as the licensing arrangement. I also wanna mention that we have this complicated arrangement where um producers of liquor can't sell directly to the public, they have to sell through wholesalers who then sell to the package stores. And I'm trying to understand the laws here, they're not familiar to me. Um, along, you know, to answer that very question, are, are micro breweries an exception uh to that law, so that they can sell directly to the public on premises, the beer? Um, I've been.
That may, that may be the reason why they don't sell beer at Barrington Brewery and they don't sell beer at John Harvard's Brew House.
Mm-hmm.
In Canton, because of the law.
Um, Jack's, Jack's Abbey um in Framingham um is a model for a very large facility, it's really big. It's in an old dentis and manufacturing plant um over near the center, Framingham Center. And uh down, or I guess it's called downtown Framingham. And uh, you know, they definitely produce the beer there, you can see the, the equipment, that's part of the charm. Um, I don't remember whether you can actually bring home a six-pack. Do you remember, Steve? Yeah, um. Well, I, I have comments, but I can save them, but I think um just figuring out what the law is so that we understand it um is, is an important step.
It was my understanding that, that a micro brewery or a nano brewery could actually sell what they were producing. Um, and then they had choices in terms of how they were gonna, what, under, under what provision of the law they wanted to actually apply for their licensure. Um, the brew pub, I wasn't, I didn't see the vehicle under which they were actually able to just sell alcohol without it being associated with food.
Well, so we have two issues, we have, first issue is, what's the state law on this? And the second is we have the town limitations, which is if we're at our limit, seems to me that this is just a ploy to get around that limit. If somebody, if somebody wants to sell um a four-pack or a six-pack, I'm not talking about, you know, a sample, I'm talking about a four-pack or a six-pack. It just gets around the town's limitation, I don't.
Yeah, but Marty, that, that may just be a question of, of amending that other bylaw at the same time. There might be some state limitations as to the number of package stores that we can have in town.
Well, we have to deal with both of that.
Yeah, but, but um, uh, I don't, I don't think we're at the state law limit, because as I said, I do remember la- last year or the year before uh the select board were talking about increasing the limit so that, so that they could give more licenses.
Why didn't they?
Um.
I thought we did at the last town meeting.
Did we? Did we pass it?
I believe that we did.
Amy's nodding her head. You think we did?
Amy also had her hand up.
Yes.
What's the limit now, Amy?
That I, I need to double check, but I wanted to mention that um this is a different kind of license, this is a farmer's series pouring permit. So depending on um the actual type of permit they get, and they're sort of a farmer's license, because they are brewing the beer themselves, it allows them to actually sell it direct to the consumer, whether it be for consumption on site or for retail sales, but it's a totally different type of liquor license than what a town provides to a package store or to a restaurant.
So you don't think the town has the ability by law to limit that?
Um, I, I think that the town does, in fact, um, we started doing preliminary work on this um back in um early um, about, probably about a year ago, we actually had town council um in their firm take a look at the current bylaws as it, as it pertains to um liquor licenses in town. And they took a first stab at am- amending it, as how, how the select board would need to amend it in order to allow for a brewery to even come to town, so these were very preliminary discussions, but um it, they would need significant changes in order to allow for a farmer's um pouring permit.
Well, okay, so I didn't study the, the farmer's pouring permit, but I generally understood that to be, they could pour you a drink. So I, to me, that's a different thing than what Adam was talking about leaving with a four-pack or a six-pack, that, that's what I was focused on. But maybe I'm wrong.
That's a valid point, it does, these provisions do say a facility licensed under the relevant state and federal statutes. And we could also say something to the effect of, uh, and without conflict to other local bylaws. So that they are adhering to whatever that requirement is. I'm not, I, I, I agree with you, Marty, I think that, you know, what you're trying to do is set this up so that we're not simultaneously contravening another bylaw or other sta- state or federal statute.
Right. With Jean is jumping out of her skin, I think.
That's Jean, go for it.
Notice, and it was very helpful to provide the statutes, um, section nineteen um, which seems to be simply um manufacturing of alcoholic beverages.
Yes, for the record, I believe this is the Massachusetts General Law, chapter one thirty-eight. For the section.
These are sections of chapter one fifty?
One thirty-eight, I believe.
Oh, chapter one thirty-eight, thank you. Um, but there, you have section nineteen, which seems to be um the um the, the manufacturer of, of liquor and beer, et cetera. And the sale to the, the um wholesalers um and importers. And then, section nineteen C is the farmer brewery licenses. Which has some strange limitations about the beer being produced from grains that are grown in Massachusetts. But there is also section nineteen D, pub brewery licenses. Which seem to be very similar to what's allowed under farmer brewery, but without the limitations about growing the grain, et cetera. Um, and there are some parts of it, um, I, I found unclear, I would have to read it more carefully or have somebody more familiar with it to explain it. Um, and I won't go into detail on what I found unclear, but it did seem as though, although I was thinking Framingham would be a good model. Um, but uh Framingham refers, does refer to the farmer brewer um, um section of the law, and I'm not quite sure why. Now, so there's, you know, there's that, I think we have to be, we have to understand these laws. Um, and I, I think, and maybe Amy or um Dave and Louis, you can tell me if I'm wrong. It looked like we were pulling ideas from Rhythm more than any other community. Is that right? Because they have the three, they have the brewery, the brew pub, I mean, excuse me. They have, well, they actually have four, brew pub brewery, micro brewery and nano brewery. Um, in contrast to Framingham, uh, which just has um the, the pub and the um brew distillery.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it was a question of whether or not, um, because Framingham really was not creating two different levels for the brewery. So I think it was, I think, or I think Rhythm was creating two levels for the brewery. I think, um, I think, uh, what else, other town, I think Westboro was creating different, different levels, I think recognizing the capacity. And I think wanting um smaller facilities in some districts and larger facilities in other districts. If you, if you don't wanna, if you don't wanna fine-tune it that way, then you could use the Framingham model, which would just be a brew pub and a, and, and basically a brewery. Um, and not make any distinction on its capacity.
That, that's where I'm going with that, I think having the three levels, see, I, I envision this. I envision uh the breweries with restaurant as an accessory use. And the breweries with accessory restaurants being in our industrial zones, I particularly think of mixed use one twenty-eight as being the zone where this would be great. Uh, you know, you have buildings with the river, you could have outdoor dining. Um, I'm a little concerned about having these uses in any zones that abut residential. Um, mostly because of the noise factor. But if we're talking about something that's not much different from a restaurant. Um, you know, then, you know, with the, the careful conditions, it probably can, can happen. But when it comes to, yeah, so the brew pubs, the smaller facilities, I could see in our downtown area. And in some of our smaller industrial areas in, in Needham Heights. But I, I, I just think we're making it awfully complicated by having three types of uses. And what I'd say is, the first, you know, the brew pub, as you have it, is, is the primary use is a restaurant. The accessory use is the brewing of, or brewing, distilling, or whatever you say with wine, of the beverage. And allowing the beverage to be served on site. On the other hand, the distillery, the primary use is the distilling or the, uh, or excuse me, or the, the brewing or distilling or whatever of the liquor. And the uh accessory use is the restaurant. And the service of that brewed um beverage on site. Um, and, and, and then I would go accordingly to whichever sections of the town these seem appropriate.
Jean, do you, when you define accessory, basically thinking in terms of uh less than fifty percent of the square footage? Is that what you're thinking?
Uh, yeah, I guess, I guess that's true, yeah. Uh, I hadn't thought of it in those um lines, but usually an accessory use would be um not, not more than half of the square footage, yeah. Uh, and a distillery could, you know, uh, uh, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to know more about other places and what the square footage is, uh, we could divvy up, making inquiries, I'd be glad to take Framingham. Um, I used to, I used to work there. Um, and, and, and just try to have some real-world examples that we can go by. Um, I think we're going in the right direction.
I think Amy's done, Amy, I think you've done a lot of that research, haven't you?
I have, yes, I've got a, I've got a spreadsheet that basically lists um over fifty different breweries throughout Massachusetts um in, in doing research, you know, whether or not they had food in-house, that they produced in-house, most of them seemed to outsource to either food trucks or to a catering type of business. Um, the majority of the breweries that I researched are located in more industrial kind of areas, there are several that are in downtowns, for example, downtown Hudson has a couple of um downtown Newburyport has one, but for the most part, they tend to be in more industrial areas.
Mm-hmm. And I think one reason for that is um that it could be a use that uh, that could be noisy. Um, involve a fair amount of traffic and, and a late-night music, for example, et cetera, and so you wanna be careful about the location. Um, at the same time, it can be, I, I think I was telling Lee, I was visiting my daughter, who lives in a suburb of Rochester, New York, and the suburb is on the Erie Canal and has old industrial buildings. And uh the breweries have been absolutely wonderful for the downtown of that uh suburb, Fairport. Um, the, the industrial area is right next to the little downtown. So they have, in the old industrial buildings, the big breweries with the big restaurants. And then in the downtown, they've got sort of small wine tasting establishments. It's just the, you know, she, she writes about it, um, and how, I'm like to tell on me. Um, so I'm looking for that kind of model, I'm just thinking, we don't really have that old historic um industrial area with the old buildings. Places in Massachusetts.
We have, we have the Carter Building.
We have the Carter Building, there we go. At a different use. Right, and it backs up on the railroad tracks, it doesn't back up on any residences.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm noticing in the, the description of the Framingham and the Rhythm um bylaws that, that they do allow retail sales, but only of products that are actually produced at the, at that site.
Exactly, and I think that should be done. I don't think that necessarily, I mean, I guess I disagree with Adam on that.
That's what Adam was talking about. And uh, you, you know, Marty was questioning whether that was essentially an additional package store. But um, you know, if they, they probably make a distinction in Rhythm and Framingham, sure, I'm sure Framingham has a lot of package stores in addition. In addition to these, I don't know if they're at their limit, but um Amy could find out.
Yeah, I, but I, I do think that, that, that part of the accessory use for um, for a brewery uh would be being able to eat there and to sell a certain amount to people, people who come in to, to um with it to drink or eat. Another thing I, I think on this particular use is the idea that you have to eat. I don't know, I think we just have to get away from that. I think people would go to a place like this just to have some drinks with their friends, and not necessarily to eat. And, you know, I thought the select board was even talking about how we should get away from the idea that, oh, gee, bars, you know, not in Needham. Is that right, or am I wrong about that?
Well, I, I think, I think we should confer with the select board.
Oh, yeah, because they're a licensing authority.
They're having a tasting room, if a brewery is gonna have a tasting room. I don't think we should be forcing them to have food with the tasting room, you know, any tasting room that I've been in, they've just, you know, supplied you with small, small samples of the, of, of, of the beers or the wines that they're producing and, and uh, and there's no food, I mean, you're there to taste the alcohol, not to not to really be, you know, in a restaurant-type, type setting. So um, I think, I think we need to, to confer with the select board on that issue.
Dave, what do you think? What's your opinion on having a, you know, a brewery facility of some kind that doesn't do any food? What's your opinion on having a, you know, a brewery facility of some kind that doesn't do any food at all?
I think in this day and age, it's gonna be, that's gonna be a push with the whole drunk driving thing. And, you know, not that you're gonna go in there and, and get wasted, but I can tell you that. Number one, I'm glad we're having this conversation. I'm glad we're looking at actually creating a bylaw. Cause I absolutely agree with you. If somebody's gonna come into town and they call me up and say, hey, can I do this kind of brewery? I can say, yeah, here it is on page whatever. And when I'm trying to cram it into a like use, because. This is not a like use compared to anything. And what we talk about, the more I think everybody realizes this is complicated. Uh, more complicated than we think. So.
If I may just interrupt very quickly, just for the record, Natasha Espada, the fifth member of the planning board is joining us.
Okay. So. So one other, one other comment I got, which is kind of interesting, my. Out near my second home in Sturbridge, in Charlton, there's actually Treehouse Brewery. They, they built a new facility out there. It's absolutely gorgeous. It's like the Disney World of breweries out there. But you can go in there and you can get food. They have live entertainment, the whole nine yards. What's interesting is they do not deliver their product. You have to call and come and pick it up. So restaurants are there, um, you know, uh, clubs go there, homeowners or, or customers go there. They supply you with dollies. You can call ahead of time and you wheel the stuff, uh, wheel the stuff out, put it in your car and off you go. When you go there, if you're going to sample drinks or have drinks at the facility, they stamp your wrist. And they basically allow you to have two drinks in that facility and that's it. So that's how they handle no food, food or, or over drinking kind of, kind of thing. It seemed over the top, but if you saw the amount of people that are coming and going in this place. I don't know if Charlton had the same concern over it. But that's how they, they handled it, but. It, it definitely. Anybody could buy there and like I said, you could order it, you could order it warm, you could order chilled, you could mix the orders. Uh, and they prepared it for you and they put a number on it. You, you walked up and off you went. So a larger type of facility, but just kind of gives you a different idea of what you can do and what you can't do. And how, how different towns in, uh, are dealing with these things.
We should probably get a bus and all of us go, uh, tour a bunch of these facilities.
I agree.
Cause you know, you, there's, you know, there's like in, in, uh, in Somerville, there's Aaronoff Brewery and they have events as, you know, as part of their activity. They don't have a food requirement, but as a convenience, there's other food facilities that are kind of. Take space in their overall place, which is an interesting way, you know, which is another interesting way to do it. So they've got a bunch of different types of food. So there's all kinds of ways to, you know, to do this. So what are our, well, actually Marty, I was gonna ask, what are our next steps? But Marty, did you have other comments or questions on this?
Well, I'll just add two things. One is, I, I think there's too many, it, it is an attempt to make too many distinctions among the three kinds of breweries. And I kind of like Jean's idea of let's just whittle it down to.
The two?
The two. To me, that makes a lot more sense than trying to go with this far more complicated thing, and I think it's unnecessary. And the only other thing I want to add, I guess, is what is the timeframe that we're looking at here for trying to put something together? Are you trying to have something ready for the next town meeting?
That was, that was my goal. Um, I guess I didn't realize it was gonna be as complicated as this conversation seems to be indicating. That was my goal, was to try to get something done at the, at the annual town meeting. Which.
Is it now, is that April or May?
That's in May, which really means we need to get something, you know, agreed on this month. I mean, this, so that the selectmen, cause we need to start the zoning process with the selectmen. Cause I've got to refer an article to them that needs to be over there. I think Alex had laid out a draft schedule for me. Think I was looking at having the selectmen accept our draft zoning article on February twenty.
Yeah, Lee, I don't, I don't, I don't see it being ready.
I'd like to do it.
Tell me, tell me.
Well, there's also, there's also the special within the annual, which would give us, you know, a little more time before we could be.
But we've got so many other things going on our plate right now. In fact, I was thinking this morning that, um, and I, and I don't know where the, um. The housing committee is, I don't know whether, and Jean and Natasha can speak to whether you're trying to get something. For the May town meeting, or if you're looking for the October town meeting.
October on that. I think Oc- October on that, if, if, if there's any hanging fruit.
I was, I was, I was realizing that, um, uh, we haven't done anything with Stephen Freel's suggestion. At the, um, at the Muzzy Ford. Town meeting discussion about, um, changing our bylaws to allow for more, uh. Uh, a more green. Bylaw provision in, in our special permitting or our site plan review, special permitting process. And we, we haven't done anything with that. And I don't think that that's a very difficult provision to work with. I, I think if, if, um. I think the language that Stephen presented last year, uh, was pretty much on target. Maybe it needed some tweaking. But, um, I think, you know, I made a promise that, that we would look at that and, and, you know.
Well, there, well, there isn't, there's a study committee actually that's been created that's, that's looking at that, that Natasha's participating in. And I was, I was interested.
We haven't. Lee, we haven't started working on that, because the, the group hasn't been completely coalesced.
Right, but I, it was my, it was my idea that, that, that the, that that group would be coming forward with some ideas and suggestions that would then be implemented, which is what Paul is talking about.
Yeah, well, at this point, it sounds like then we may be looking at that for October also.
If you look at today's globe, today's globe, you see the report that the, um. The state has just come out with, um, proposed two, two levels. Of, uh, going in the direction of green buildings. One is a revision of the state building code. And the other is a, a new stretch code. Uh, that communities can, uh, choose to adopt. Now, I know Needham was very slow to adopt this stretch code as compared with our other suburban communities. But maybe we'll move more quickly this time. But I think, I think that should be looked at. Natasha, were you aware of that? I, I suppose you were aware of that.
Yeah, but it's very slow. Any of that, I get, I have one quick question and I apologize for how late I am, but, um. Just a, a quick question. Could, does the commercial district site that we just re-zoned where Muzzy is? I know that, uh, Marty had talked about us. That, that in his mind, you could do breweries by special permit. You know, so if we wait to go to town meeting until November or a special town meeting. Can we, can that site still have opportunities? If that's something they, that they bring on, that we could look at it as a, you know, independently, um, from any zoning change that we have?
I thought we rejected that idea in a prior discussion we had.
I don't recall rejecting it. I think the zoning currently doesn't allow for it. And the zoning would need to be changed to enable it. Um, and I think.
I thought Marty, yeah, Lee, I thought Marty, and, and Jean said that they had written the zoning so that it was open ended for breweries in general, or, you know, that, that you could, you would have to do it. It would have to be reviewed via special permit. Is that wrong? Am I wrong in that?
I, I don't think so. I think what we, what we were focusing on is the language in our zoning bylaw. And Marty in particular mentioned this, um, that allows like uses. If it's not specifically mentioned in our bylaw, if it's similar to, and has a similar impact to. A use that isn't allowed or allowed by special permit, it can be allowed. But we could be concerned that that really wasn't strong enough.
Guys, I, I apologize. I, I'm gonna be adamant about this. We've, we've missed an opportunity already in the town to have this use. Someone has come to the town to try and make this happen. And because of the ambiguity in our bylaw, and because it doesn't seem to be so, uh, because of the ambiguity, we lost that opportunity. Why can't we do our job and set, you know, and, and work towards in the next two weeks? Resol- resolving this, uh, uh, bylaw and presenting it at a town meeting on schedule.
With all due respect, Adam. And I do, and I do mean, mean this to be respectful. But it's a question of priorities. We're still mired in sixteen eighty eight Central Avenue, which is taking a lot of our time. Okay, it's taking a lot of my time away from my family and my work. And, you, you know, we have to prioritize things. And some things just can't be done on that kind of a timetable. You know. Marty and Jean are lucky enough to be retired. Marty's gonna be off the board in a couple of months. And, you, you know, sometimes we just don't have time to get everything done, Adam.
And I'll mention one, one more thing along the line of priorities. There are many people who really would like to see us address, uh, on the ADUs. And expand the availability of accessory dwelling units. Um, and think that, why don't we bring that to the, to the, to the town meeting coming right up? And I've said, well, you know, we're gonna study that as part of the housing planning group. And then we'll bring to a later town meeting what we recommend. But if we bring the brewery thing, we don't bring the ADU thing. I, I do think that's going to be kind of upsetting to some people who think we should be bringing the ADU thing right away.
Dave, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. So. I hate to, to cut out on this meeting, but if I could leave, that'd be great. I, I think you know what we tried to do here. I, I think, you know, if we get. If we get sent in a certain direction, I'm, I'm willing with Amy and, and, uh, Lee to work on this thing. As hard as we need to work on it. Give us a little bit of direction. My, my concern in some of these things was parking, how do we regulate parking, some of the outside dining? We allow outs- outdoor, uh, entertainment. I think that's gonna be kind of, you know, where the location ends up. That's why I like to do it under a special permit, because then we can condition each one of these. But I think, I think it's doable. I, I know you guys are busy. I don't want to get into that. But anything I can do to help it out, I will certainly do that. And I appreciate that we're looking at this as a new bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
And I want to offer too. Despite the fact that I'm so immersed in the housing plan working group. I would like to take what's been drafted here. And, and give it a, and give it a little bit of a rewrite. If, if that wouldn't be too presumptuous of me, uh, to do that.
That would be very welcome, Jean. I always welcome your point on something.
Cause I think we're, we're, we're three quarters of the way there. And.
In the meantime.
The materials, backup materials were great.
To get to Natasha's point, I don't remember what exactly we have in the bylaw for the highway commercial one. But if, if there's something in the bylaw. That is close enough that we can apply section three point one, if somebody comes to us in the meantime. In the appropriate district, that we can apply section three point one that says, yes, that's, that's. That, that looks like something that is allowed in this. That's allowed in this district. So until we actually have this separate brewery bylaw. We, we can use three point one to allow something to go in there. I think we should. If it, you know, part of, part of the issue that convinced me that we needed to do this was that, um. Lee and I went through, um, the, the, the various districts and the various, uh, present. Allowed uses. And what was allowed in some districts that was close enough to this and what. What, what was some districts that didn't have anything that was close enough to this? And it just, it just didn't work. And, you know, a, a, a lot of it was, well, it's manufacturing. Well, we've got districts where manufacturing is a by right use. Now, you know, I don't think we want to go there and allow these breweries by, by right. I don't, I don't want to see anything that has to do with alcohol be a by right use. So. So, so, so I think that was an issue. But as a stopgap matter, matter, until we can get this in front of town meeting. If somebody comes to town and says, I want to do a brewery. Where can I put it? You know, we might be able to look at some place and pull out three point one and, and say to that person, we. We think we'd allow it in this particular district.
Amy, what I might, what I may suggest then is if you hear of anyone in the meantime, before we're able to organize ourselves here. And maybe Jean, we might still be able to make it for this, you know, uh, May town meeting. But if something comes up, let us know. And then we can put it on, you know, our agenda and we can try and get them to come in for an informal meeting with us. And we can round people where they're at. Okay?
Yeah, have them, have them come in for a chair, vice chair meeting. That's the appropriate forum for something like that.
Okay, Jean, if, if we can work on maybe trying to refine this and re-present it. At, at the, at the next board meeting, that would be great.
I'm happy to help on that. I'm happy to help on that too.
I just had, um, one, one wording issue that I do want to point out that I had a problem with. Which is that in the definition of nano brewery, and you might wind up taking this language out completely, but. Still, you had the language that said, uh, pri- primarily for on premises consumption. And sale with limited distribution to retail or wholesale. I don't know what limited distribution means. I would want something, if you're going to limit the amount of distribution, I want something that is a more objective standard. You had that in the, in the brew pub, you had twenty five percent of the production capacity. But to just say limited distribution, I, that's.
Okay.
That's up for argument as to what that means.
For, for what it's worth, I have some small edits. I'm not gonna.
Yeah, I had some nit error edits also, and I, I don't think we need to go there with, because I think we're gonna be presented with a, with a whole new bylaw.
It simplifies it for me.
And you know, I'm a pretty good editor, I think. I'll find that place where it says thirty and it should say thirty one.
Since we, since we have you, Jean, can I just look at the proposed bylaw for, for one second? Because in the definition of brew pub. Where it says restaurants licensed under the relevant state and federal statutes, and then there's a comma. I don't think the comma should be there.
Yeah, uh, that's exactly the kind of thing that I. Doesn't make sense.
It's a good thing you guys aren't in Rentham or Westboro.
Well, I think it's carried over.
I mean, these definitions have been used over and over again in the form you see them in.
I saw that that was carried over for Rentham, but Rentham made a mistake. That comma should. And where it says, and where it says, for example, on nano breweries. Um, in parentheses, a barrel being equivalent to thirty one gallons per year?
I didn't understand that. Does anybody understand that? Do you understand that, Amy?
Isn't that in the statute? I thought I just saw something in the statute that had, that had a definition of a barrel as being a certain number of gallons.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that was, I thought that came out of the statute.
The language of per year is what I'm objecting to. Those two words. Makes no sense to have it be per year.
Barrel, I can see a bar. I just don't understand what it means to say a barrel being equivalent to thirty one gallons per year. I can't imagine what it means.
It just works here that I'm objecting to.
No, Marty, we're, we're trying to define the size.
Right.
As, you know, um, with a capacity of not more than fifteen thousand barrels. Now, maybe that's where per year, per year should be. Fifteen thousand barrels per year, a barrel.
That's where you can, you can put the per year after barrels. But you can't put it after the thirty one gallons. That doesn't make any sense.
I'm trying to find where I, where I just saw as I was going through these.
Is it in the statute?
Statutes that I saw a barrel being thirty one gallons.
Uh huh, well, that, that's.
Did happen to catch my eye.
Yeah, that, that could make sense, but the per year makes no sense, yeah.
So anyway, those are the kind of small things that I just pointed out. And I'm glad Jean agrees with me. She's the editor per. And I'm glad Jean agrees with me. She's the editor par excellence here.
Okay. Well, Jean and I, well, Jean, I, Jean, Amy, Dave and I will be, I guess, back at the drawing board. But I'm glad we had this conversation. And the goal really for me is to try to get this in a form where it can be done at town meeting in the spring. And I, I agree with Jean. I think we're three quarters of the way there. We, Amy's done all the base research. We have a framework for zoning. I think we can just tweak it and hopefully get something in front of you the next meeting that is in, at least in, in a form that's sufficient to start the process. I mean, you know, it, it can be tinkered in with again, after the close of the public hearing, before, before it goes on the warrant. But the process needs to get initiated if we're going to make this a May town meeting.
And the public hearing can be when? No, probably no sooner than very late March?
I think I had, we have, I have a draft schedule here.
Yeah, where are those dates? What are the dates?
Well, my goal was to get it to the selectmen so they would vote it on February 22nd to refer it back to us. And then we'd have notices in the paper on the 24th of February, which, and March the 3rd, with a hearing on March the 15th, which can slide. I mean, we could slide it, especially if we're looking at doing it at the annual or the special within the annual beyond that March 15th date. But ideally in the mid, mid March, you can probably slide, you can, you can probably slide it another two or three weeks.
Early April.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to get it done by the end of March would be my goal.
Okay.
Was this sent, was this sent in a manner that it can be redlined or, or used as a?
I'll, I'll email it to you. I know, I don't, I, you know, probably not. You probably got the packet. So it's in a PDF. So I'll email you the word version, Jean.
Okay. And I think Adam said he'd like to have some input at that stage too, when we're drafting, so.
Sure. I'll email it to both of you.
Just to get to Marty's point, I see where I saw the 31 gallons being a barrel.
Yeah, I found it too.
In Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 19D, that talks about pub brewery licenses, they have, at the very end in, in subsection L, they have license fees. And the license fees are the number of barrels per year. And then at the end, it says, for the above stated purposes, a barrel shall be 31 gallons.
Right. That makes sense.
So it's barrels per year. Well, a barrel is 31 gallons.
And then define what barrel is. Right.
Yeah. On the farmer's market, one has similar language, yeah.
Okay. We're already at, at 520. You know something? Before we go to, to 520, let me see if, that there are still some people in the attendees list and I'm going to, there are only three of them. Well, actually there were only two of them. And then we have Needham Channel. If the attendees have been listening to this discussion and would like to add any comments, I'm going to invite them to do so. If you would like to raise your hands, your hand. I guess not. Okay. Let's move on with the agenda. I'll keep this page open in case a hand goes up. Item number two minutes. I didn't see any minutes in our packet. So, report from planning director?
I sent you a, another revised draft on 1688, which I just emailed out right before this meeting. I, I did a redline of our last draft to reflect the conversation that we had at our previous meeting. And we'll, I'll, I, because I wanted to get that out to you today. And then Alex will do a release on a revised meeting packet for the meeting that we have scheduled for Friday morning.
Okay. I'm sure that the, that the, the applicant and the neighborhood groups would like to, like to see that. When do you think you'll have it on the website?
I think Alex will have it either probably, probably first thing tomorrow morning.
That'd be great. Okay. I didn't see any correspondence in our packet. So I believe we're ready for a motion to adjourn. Have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? We've lost Natasha again. So I think, you know, that's still Amy. That's not Natasha. I'm sorry, but I blocked your face with, with the participant.
Hold on. Natasha's calling in. Hold on. Yes, Natasha. We, we're just actually taking a motion to adjourn right now.
Ask what her vote is. Adam, you're muted.
And he's talking, he's talking.
Natasha votes yes.
Okay. Natasha Espada votes yes. Marty Jacobs.
Yes.
Jean McKnight.
Yes.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the cheer votes aye. It's unanimous five to nothing. We're adjourned.